Call the December 16th, 2019 Belvidere City Council Regular Meeting to order. The clerk will call the roll.
Brereton?
Here.
Crawford?
Here.
Frank?
Here.
Freeman?
Here.
McGee?
Here.
Porter?
Here.
Ratcliffe?
Here.
Snow?
Here.
Stevens?
Here.
Nine present?
Please stand for the invocation, remain standing. Stand, pledge allegiance, remain standing for the invocation. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Heavenly Father, leadership requires two virtues that seem very simple until they become very inconvenient, honesty and courage. But along with that honor comes duty of humility, integrity, and public service. So please, join me for a moment of prayer. God of justice and mercy, thank you for the gift of life and the opportunity to serve the people of our city. Help us to act with character and conviction. Help us to listen with understanding and goodwill. Help us to speak with charity and restraint. Give us a spirit of service. Remind us that we are stewards of your authority. Guide us to be leaders your people need. Help us to see the humanity and dignity of those who disagree with us and to treat all persons, no matter how weak or poor, with the reverence your creation desires. And finally, Father, renew us with the strength of your presence and the joy of helping to build a community worthy of the human person. We ask this as your sons and daughters, confidence in your goodness and love. Amen. Welcome, everyone. We have a couple of folks that wanted to visit with us this evening to get started. Mindy?
Good evening.
Good evening. Hello, everyone. I'm Mindy Long. I live at 404 Highland Street here in Belvidere. I have lived in Belvidere for nearly 50 years. Out of those 50 years, I've paid property taxes and voted for about half of them. I've lived in the same house in Ward Five for 16 years, so I am one of Alderman Freeman's constituencies. What I also am is the local history specialist at the Idaho Public Library. I have visited this library for nearly 50 years, taking advantage of every service they have, and it's been a wonderful value to me as a person growing up in Belvidere. My colleagues spoke really well in the last couple of Mondays and let you know a little bit about what we do at the library, but I wanted to give you just kind of a picture of what I do as a local history specialist to help you have a more informed decision when you take your vote tonight on the tax levy increase. The popularity of this TV show is like Who Do You Think You Are? And the availability of DNA tests and ancestry databases makes everybody and their brother want to look up their heritage and their ancestry. So it's pretty popular nowadays. We get a number of requests every single week from people who want to know their ancestry here in town in Belvidere. I had a lady a couple of weeks ago that said her ancestor ran a quarry, operated quarry here in North Boone County, and so I helped her find out who that was and what the name of that quarry was. So it's pretty popular. I do everything I can to help people fill in their family history, including researching their house history, tracing the ownership through their land deeds. I look up old birth and death certificates. I also lead two history book clubs. I have a Bring Your Own Book Club. I arrange for local authors to conduct meet and greets, and I facilitate a lot of different programs. And the one thing I really do that I feel is important to this community is I maintain a paper and electronic obituary file for every single person in our city and county that we lose. I try to promote a very positive history of our community. I create, every Thursday, I create a Throwback Thursday post with pictures and a little bit of history of what's going on in the community. I write an article every month for the Belvidere paper about the historic women in our town, and I volunteer and work at the museum, the Historic Preservation Committee, and many local organizations on various events and research projects. So I hope that gives you a little bit of an idea of what I do. I just have a couple more things that I won't keep you long, but I did hear in the last couple of last meetings that somebody said everything functioned just fine last year without this tax levy increase that we're asking for. We did not function just fine at the library. My local history department had to operate on just $500 budget for the year, so that meant that I couldn't even buy the county and city plat maps for our community. I had to sacrifice the poke directories, and we could not renew some of our genealogical memberships. Overall, for the library altogether, we lost a lot of staff. We lost a couple of bilingual programmers, two assistant directors, a director, and a couple of clerks, because each and every one of them left our library to go somewhere else where they could make more money. Our wages are far below average, as you can easily see online by looking up what we earned. The remaining members of our staff, we're not complaining. We're not asking for raises from you. We're just simply asking for enough money to keep our library functioning in the next year. We have a massive state mandated minimum wage increase going on. Some of us don't even make that mandated minimum wage. So the little bit of increase we're asking for in the tax levy is going to help us operate the library and keep some of us in our jobs. Without that increase, we're going to lose those jobs. I probably will be one of the people that are cut from the staff. You will not have a local history person. You will not have genealogical research, and your community will pretty much be lost. I also want to say that Alderman Frank brought up, I think it was last week, about non-resident fees. We appreciate that input. I mean, it's great to have someone thinking outside the box and trying to raise money for us, but we are an Illinois State Library, public library. We are mandated by Illinois State Library law. It's not our choice how we, we have three methods exactly that we can determine how we charge non-resident fees. One of those is not even open to us because we're not an agricultural community anymore. There's two, the other two are the general mathematical formula and the tax bill method. You can find these methods on CyberDrive on the Secretary of State website, very easy to understand. But one of the things that the Illinois Library Tax Act does is it charges us and our library board with finding the most fair and equitable method for a non-resident fee. Years ago, the library board decided that the most fair and equitable method was to charge every single resident and non-resident the same exact rate, so the people who live in the city are paying the same property taxes people who don't live in the city. That's really the most fair way you can do it. The fee schedule also can't be changed for a year once it's set. You have three months before the start of the fiscal year to determine what rate you're going to set and how you're going to calculate it, and that has to stay in place for a year. So we can't just arbitrarily go and say, oh, let's just charge everybody $50. So I'm not an attorney, but I'm pretty sure we would get in big trouble in the city if we were violating Illinois Library tax regulations. So we don't set the boundaries for the city, and we don't decide who lives where. It's not up to us in the library. It's not our job. We're not politicians. We would dearly, dearly love to have every single person in the county and the city come into our library and be able to use it. It's not our choice, and it's a very difficult conversation for us to have with patrons when they come in and we have to tell them, you have to pay $200 rather than pay it every month out of your mortgage escrow or a couple times a year in your tax bill. So, I mean, thanks for the input, but it's a little bit more difficult than just saying we're going to charge $50. So, I mean, I guess in the end, it's really about choice, an informed choice. We can choose a lot of different things, and I hope that when you make your decision tonight, what I have let you know a little bit about my job and the library and its functions and what you've learned in the last two weeks helps you make that informed choice and keep our wonderful Carnegie Library in operation and our staff that really care deeply about the library employed for the next year. Thank you.
Next up, we have Loretta Swanson. Loretta?
Good evening. Good evening. Thank you. My name is Loretta Swanson. I live at 1018 Eighth Avenue in Belvidere. I have been a property owner in Belvidere for a couple of decades now, and I'm also on the library board. I'm relatively new to that position, so I stand before you tonight as both a taxpayer in this community and a huge supporter of the library. In preparation for speaking with you this evening, I wondered if my neighbors were equally as strong supporters of the library. So I did a little white canvassing. I talked to 21 people in my neighborhood, and I've lived in the same house in the same neighborhood for 20 years, so I know them all pretty well. So I talked to 21 people, as random as I could do it, you know, I met them walking the dog. And out of those 21 households, 16 of them support the library. And not only do they support the library, but out of those 16, not all of them even have a library card. So while they might not make use of the library, they understand the need to have the library in this community. It is a tremendous resource, especially for members of the community who are, who don't have a lot of discretionary income, who don't have reliable means of transportation. I'm a traditional library user. I take out books and movies and maybe use some of the genealogy databases, but when I was elected to the board, I started looking at the programs. The winter program schedule for the library is eight pages long. I was gobsmacked. I started reading them. I don't know what some of these things are. They have a potty palooza. Yes, you can help, you can help with potty training your children. I mean, where else could somebody in this community who doesn't have access to transportation, who doesn't have a lot of extra income, where else could they go for this sort of assistance? There's reading programs that start at the age of zero. So you can bring your infant, and I'm a teacher. I've been a college professor for 25 years, and we know, research has told us that the best way to develop the young brain and prepare them to be successful, not only in school, but in life and as citizens of our community, is with early childhood reading programs. They have, the library has something for everybody. They help Boone County Animal Control adopt out rescue cats. They have resources for people who need a job. They'll help you write a resume. They will help you fill out the application. Their services are amazing, and they'll, they do it all on a very, very small budget. So I'm hoping that this evening you will understand that the Idaho Public Library is not just loved by some, it is beloved in this community, and I hope you will vote yes on the increase in the tax levy. Thank you.
Thank you, Loretta. Appreciate it. Okay, next up, under approval of minutes, A, approval of minutes of the regular meeting of the Belvidere City Council, December 2nd, 2019, is presented. I entertain a motion to approve. Motion by Alderman Snow, second by Alderman Porter. Questions, comments, or proposed amendments to the minutes as presented. Hearing not all, those in favor of approval, will, when your name is called, signify by saying aye, those opposed nay.
Brereton?
Aye.
Crawford?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Ratcliffe?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Nine in favor?
Minutes are approved unanimously. Thank you. Under public hearing, it's on the proposed tax levy increase. I will read you the notice in the paper. Notice of Proposed Property Tax Increase for the City of Belvidere. Item one, public hearing to approve a proposed property tax levy increase for the City of Belvidere for 2019 will be held on December 16th, 2019 at 7:00 PM at the City Council Chambers at 401 Whitney Boulevard, Belvidere, Illinois. Any person desiring to appear at public hearing and present testimony to the taxing district may contact Becky Tobin, Budget Finance Officer, also at 401 Whitney Boulevard, Suite 100, Belvidere, Illinois, 61008. Telephone, 815-544-2612. Item two, the corporate and special purpose property taxes extended or abated for 2018 were $5,694,873. The proposed corporate and special purpose property taxes to be levied for 2019 are $5,817,475. This represents a 2.15 increase over the previous year. Property taxes extended or abated for debt service for 2018 were $0. The estimated property taxes to be levied or abated for debt service for 2019 are $0. Under item four, the total property taxes extended or abated for 2018 were $5,694,873. Estimated total property taxes to be levied or abated for 2019 are $5,817,475. This represents a 2.15% increase over the previous year. The tax levy under item five, the tax levy for Special Service Area Two and Three shall not exceed 0.12% of the value as equalized or assessed of taxable property within the Special Service Areas Two and Three. This was published in the Belvidere Republican on December 5th, 2019. Do we have anyone in the audience that would like to make comment at this time on the proposed tax levy increase? Okay. I will close the public hearing now. It's 7:17 PM. Under Special Messages and Proclamations, I would just share with you, I had the privilege this weekend, last, of attending the Municipal League, Illinois Municipal League Winter Meeting in Chicago, and we had a visit from, no, not Santa Claus, but the governor on Friday evening, and he has made a pledge, and we'll wait and see, of providing more infrastructure dollars for downstate communities, meaning all of us who don't live in Chicago, and a commitment to double or triple the funds that will be available in the next six years for infrastructure projects. Let's hope that he doesn't run out of strength in his check writing hand. But it was very personable. He gave a very nice address, and hopefully they will be able to carry through. Next, we have Approval Expenditures for this month. General and Special Fund Expenditures of $1,871,813.52. Excuse me, $813.52. May I have a motion to approve General Fund Expenses? Motion by Alderman Snow, second by Alderman Ratcliffe. Questions, comments concerning any of the expenditures in the report. Alderman Freeman?
So I found a few this month. So on page five, under the general, Attorney Drella received a new laptop.
It's on my desk booting up right now, actually, in the other room.
And then there was one on that same page for patent equipment for $2,500 for a trailer for Heritage Days. Was Heritage Days not back in, the end of June? Five?
That's Becky.
This was actually a trailer that was purchased as the soundstage for the strolls, and it'll also be used for Heritage Days, and we do have a sponsor that will be reimbursing the city for that as well.
Okay, so.
Alderman Freeman, just, you brought up the laptop. I want to make the council should wear something. You'll be seeing, you've seen a few come through already, more invoices for additional computers. For those of you that have older laptops or desktops at home running Windows 7, thank you. I almost said 97. I almost said 97.
Not bad.
Windows 7. That will no longer be supported by Microsoft after this coming January, which means those computers become more and more vulnerable to hacks as time goes on. So we are in the process of migrating all of our computers up to Windows 10.
Okay, and then for Chief Woody, on page 11, we got the canine vests, but will that, that was a donation, if I recall, so will that be on a line item in the accounts receivable? Becky?
It would come in under the grants line item, yes.
Okay, so then on page 13, we did some $1,500 and 495 for some bird training. Like, what is bird training?
Yeah, it's detective.
Oh, that's a detective. Sorry.
That's okay.
I'm like, what is bird training?
We got some killer birds. Bird training, little camera under the wing.
So Chief Heiser, on page 18, it was $4,835 for a calibration kit?
No, that's a, that's the ammonia PIB monitor that we got from the General Mills, $15,000 safety grant that we needed for ammonia spills in the city of Belvidere.
Okay, so that, that too will be under the grant receivables?
That's correct.
And then we rented a dumpster. We're doing some remodeling?
Yeah, we are. We're remodeling one of the rooms in downtown station.
Okay, and then for Brent, page 24, it says garage doors for $5,530?
Yeah, so there's some garage doors at the street department. The old doors were rotting out and basically falling apart, so we need to replace them.
Okay, and then I think it's the same page, hydraulic hose from a supply company. So we just order the hose and then we do our own repairs? Is that what we, that would?
When we can, yes, we do it that way.
And then on page 29, did we replace the stoplight at Town Hall Road and 20? Or did we just, what happened to that?
That would be accident and the, well, the one is the 3,242 is a damage, was a damaged loop, so it was a loop detector that we had to replace. And then the signal repair, the 1,400 was a signal repair.
Okay, and then a new street light at New Bergen Landmark on page 30?
That one was probably one that was hit by a semi, would be my guess. And I had to double check, but that would be an insurance claim we would have.
Okay. And then on 36, we paid $43,812.2 for salt. Is that going to cover us for the winter, or is that just a down payment on what we're going to need?
No, that's, that's just for what we've had to reorder to keep our supplies, keep our bins full. We have $220,000, I think, budgeted, if we'll budget for salt for the year.
Okay. And then I just, the YCliff lift station on page 45, that's complete, right? That $389,401?
No, that's just pay estimate number one. The total cost of that project is a little over $1 million.
Okay. And then on 48, to Dinerji, we paid a bunch of utilities for the wells and the lift stations. How often do we pay that? $18,000 and $13,000?
Those are, those are monthly, those are monthly bills for electrical usage, and Dinerji is a third-party vendor that we use through the contract. We lump them together to get our best price.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions or comments concerning these expenses in the general and special fund expenditures? Hearing not all, those in favor of approval, will, when your name is called, signify by saying aye, those opposed nay.
Crawford?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Ratcliffe?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Brereton?
Aye.
Nine in favor?
General and Special Fund Expenditures are approved unanimously, which brings us to Water and Sewer Fund Expenditures, $644,063.65. Questions or comments, excuse me, questions or comments concerning any of these expenditures? Hearing not all, those in favor of approval, will, when your name is called, signify by saying aye, those opposed nay.
Do we need a motion?
Oh, motion?
I'll make that motion.
By Alderman Crawford, second, by Alderman Snow. Any further questions or comments? Hearing not all, those in favor will, when your name is called, signify by saying aye, those opposed nay.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Ratcliffe?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Brereton?
Aye.
Crawford?
Aye.
Nine in favor?
Water and Sewer Fund Expenditures are approved unanimously. Next, under number eight, Committee Reports and Minutes of City Officers, please note that items A through G have been received and placed on file, which brings us to number, item H, Minutes of the Committee of the Whole Building Planning, Zoning, and Public Works of December 9th, 2019. May I have a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
By Alderman Crawford. May I have a second? By Alderman Brereton. Questions, comments, or proposed amendments to the minutes as presented? Hearing not all, those in favor of approval, will, when your name is called, signify by saying aye, those opposed nay.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Ratcliffe?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Brereton?
Aye.
Crawford?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Nine in favor?
Minutes are approved unanimously, which brings us to number nine, Unfinished Business, and up first is Ordinance 478, Second Reading, an ordinance levying taxes for all corporate purposes for the City of Belvidere, Boone County, Illinois, for the fiscal year beginning May 1st, 2019 and ending April 30th, 2020. May I have a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
Motion from Alderman Crawford, second by Alderman Snow. Okay, before we vote, please understand that this includes the 2.15% increase in the tax levy. If we vote this down, it'll be like last year where you voted down the entire levy and we have no fire, police, or public works for the next year. So I have a motion and a second. Any proposed amendments? Alderman Snow?
I would make a motion.
Includes the library.
What's that?
Includes the library.
Includes the library.
Yeah. And barring separation of the library from the city, I would make a motion to increase the library for last year's funds of, we'll just say, $15,000, and increase $15,000 to the libraries portion, which will bring the grand total up to 58, $5,832,475.
So I have an amendment on the floor to increase the library portion by $15,000. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second. Do I have questions or comments? Hearing not all, those in favor of approval of the amendment to increase the library portion by $15,000, will, when your name is called, signify by saying aye, those opposed nay.
McGee?
Nay.
Porter?
No.
Ratcliffe?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
No.
Brereton?
No.
Crawford?
Aye.
Frank?
No.
Freeman?
Nay.
Motion fails. Thank you for your attempt at giving them some equity in what they do. So that brings us back to the motion now on the floor. Yes, Alderman Brereton.
I make a motion to amend the levy to reflect a 0% increase from last year.
I have a motion for a 0% increase. Do I have a second? I have a second. Motion is second. So I have a motion to make an amendment to decrease the requested 2.15% increase and lower it to 0.
Mr. Mayor, if we can, Becky, do you know the actual levy amount then for purposes of the amendment?
The total amount that was extended-
The total amount that was extended for this last year, combining the city and the library, if that's your intent, is 5,694,873.
And that's reflective of a 0% increase?
For the city or the library.
Okay. Alderman Snow.
So, here we go. Okay, you already know, first off, that the library needs to at least mainstay, maintain status quo, and in order to do that, they're going to need additional funds. They can't have a bake sale that's going to raise this kind of money to fund that. It's inevitable thing. Everything goes up, taxes go up. The, we pay, if you want to really get on to taxes, the city's portion and the library's portion of your tax bill is negligible compared to the school district. Go dog them, they got 65% of your tax dollars on their house, and they get sales tax. So if you want to beat them up, I would do that. We in the city have the need, the library especially at this point, but the city in a whole needs the funds. I don't know where you guys think you're going to get the money to fix all the infrastructure problems we have, and in some of your cases, it's on your side of the ward. Fortunately, at my ward, I'm north of the river. I don't have all the flooding issues, but we see the issues that occur, and all that needs to be taken care of. If you don't have these increases, you're just going to put everything in a, push everything back, you're going to, it's just going to stall things over and over. The other thing is, at this point, there's growth still occurring. So even though we're asking for 5 million plus, doesn't mean that the new growth isn't going to contribute substantially to that dollar amount, and your tax bill may not even go up, could go down depending on the offset. The logistics are too far out there to know in this far in advance, but it's not a foregone conclusion that your tax bill will go up based on everything. And it surely will go up a lot more for those other entities that are gouging you tremendously. I commend the city staff and the mayor and Becky Tobin, the finance director, at trying to maintain the quote caps that we would ordinarily fall under if we weren't home rule. So I really would encourage you to vote down the zero increase and at least maintain what the ordinance was written as.
Ms. Tobin?
I could, just to put it in perspective, so the increase that we're asking for, like I said, it's an estimated assessed value, so as Alderman Snow said, you can't, this isn't 100% because you don't know until the final numbers come out. The 2.15% increase, if 100,000 home, dollar home increased in value 4.4%, which is what we're estimating that the EAV goes up, that's good. You want your EAV to go up because then your rate of taxes goes down, so everything's going in the right direction. On average, for 100,000 dollar home, you'd be looking at a dollar and 49 cents of that would increase for the library for a year. Dollar 49, and for the city, it would be $10.71 a year.
Ms. Freeman?
So I don't feel that not wanting to raise property taxes equates to not supporting the library. I support the library. However, I think that the library, you know, I think it's the pie that's the problem. I didn't create the pie that only gives the library a tiny little sliver where the park district gets a lot and the school district gets a lot more. Having said that, you know, if I only had a sliver of the pie, I would be using my board members to try to come up with some creative ideas to raise some revenue if I, you know, was really that heavily dependent on $15,000, that's not that large of an amount to try to raise independently. I mean, I don't see the school district or the park district up here, you know, begging us to raise taxes so they can have more money.
They don't need to, because they, they get an increase approved by their boards every year, every year. It compounds. We've talked till we're blue in the face. It's obvious that there are very few people on this board that understand economics, math, or compounding, but the longer you wait to raise it, then you get in the same position we were in in this community 20 years ago, where we had to go to the citizens and ask for a utility tax so we could just fix the roads. The longer you push this program and problem behind you, the bigger challenge it's going to be for the people in the future. And your comment, school district's going to get an increase, park district's going to get an increase, county's going to get an increase, what you're doing is you're saying to the city, we don't need to have an increase. Everybody else gets an increase, we fall further behind. It's been illustrated to you with a pie chart that I think everybody can understand, and I don't know why we're having this discussion year over year when, you know, it's, it's obvious, it's not, what's the total amount, Becky, did you say?
For which?
For the increase? For the city and?
The city, the total is 107,000, and then the library's, it's an additional 15,285.
What was the increase in the pensions just this year?
140,000, that's just this year. So, and plus, last year was 180,000 dollar increase.
We're not even covering the cost of our pensions that are obligated payments that we have to make. So if you go to the grocery store, let me try to make it as simple as possible, and last year you paid $2.19 for a gallon of milk, and this year, they tell you it's going to be $2.39, what do you do? You say, no, I'm not paying that increase. You don't need that money. The cows don't need that money. Come on, this is a miniscule increase, it was figured out as, as at least an effort so everybody would understand we're under the same issues. If we need to, let's split this apart, but that will require some additional work, which the attorney will explain to all of you, so that at least the library could get their money. So, additional, yes, George?
Yeah, first of all, I just want to say I agree totally with Alderman Snow. Here we go again, we had a chance to raise so many different things to get more in the tax revenue. We make 2 cents a gallon on gas, we could have made it 10, we could have made it 15 cents, but we, anything that we had a chance to raise, everybody on this council did bare minimum when we should have done more. This is something we need. You got, you got raises coming, you have to pay into the pension. The library needs more money, it's just, it's not right. We, we have to approve this tax levy.
City attorney?
Mr. Mayor, just, so the council knows, obviously we cannot completely predict the FY '21, beginning May 1/20 budget at this point, that's the plan drafted. The one thing we do know is that you have executed collective bargaining agreements with all five of your unions, which is the vast majority of your workforce. The police are owed a 2.5% increase effective May 1/20. I believe fires, 2.5 or 3%.
Yeah, I handed that out last week, it's $250,000 between the unions that we will be required in additional expenditures for next fiscal year.
And just want to make sure you understand that, because obviously, that is not money you can choose not to pay, we are contractually obligated to do that.
So what do we want to do, we want to go back to our amendment that's proposed? You've got that on the floor. And motion and a second, all those in favor of approval for the amendment? Alderman Brereton?
Yeah, I'd just like to say, I'm not against the library at all, I was born and raised here, used the library as a kid, used the library as an adult. When I campaigned for this seat not too long ago, I went around indoors saying I wasn't going to increase any taxes and I was going to look for ways to cut spending, and here we go off the bat, asking for a tax increase, I can't support that, or else I'd just be a liar.
Brent?
And just for a public works perspective, the tax levy, the money, funds generated can be used for any corporate purpose, so selfishly it tells me that if we can find ways to cut the budget, if we can find ways to balance the O and M costs of the budget, and believe me, we run lean and mean around here for the last several years, especially since the downturn. But again, selfishly from a public works perspective, whatever we don't have to spend in O and M out of that 107,000 of the, what the proposed levy increase is, that just provides more money for capital improvements. And you all know how much we need capital improvements, just in the short five-year, five-year term that you're in your budget packets, that's about $20 million. Granted, we've, we've approved a 2 cent gas tax increase, we've approved a half cent sales tax increase, but again, to spend $10 out of, out of a property owner's budget, which includes myself, to get that 107,000 dollar return on that $10 investment, it's a pretty good turnaround investment on, I guess, again, if all things play out, that's 107,000 we can use on capital improvements.
Anybody else want to buy the dapple? Alderman Crawford?
Yeah, I was just going to say, you, you have contracts that you have to honor, you got the police, you got the fire, you got city workers, they deserve the raise too, as long as the police and fire got it, public works. We had such a chance to pull in a lot of revenue, and everybody here downed it, when we could have made pretty darn good money. I mean, 2 cents a gallon, what was that? We could have made it 10.15 on gas, and we still would have been cheaper than Rockford. We've, we could have done other things, but nobody wanted to do anything, they wanted to make it bare minimum. Well, you're not going to go to the store and pay less for different things, you're going to pay more, everything's going to go up. I mean, there's contracts there that you have to honor, and of course, the payroll's going to go up.
Alderman Brereton, I respect your promise to your constituents, but it wasn't a well-thought-out promise, because the reality of it is, all of the tax money we collect, we spend on the residents of this community. And quite honestly, using it as soundbite politics to get yourself elected or reelected is not honest, I'm sorry, it's not, because sooner or later, push comes to shove, and we have to raise taxes to be able to pay the basic bills. We plow the streets, we pick up the leaves, we fix everything when it gets broken, we try to respond to everybody's needs, we provide a lot of services that other communities do not provide. Now, if we were not providing these services at the level that we are, and I think it would behoove everybody here to talk to other communities and look at how their services are provided and how they're, they feel about the level of expertise and the level of return that they get on, on their taxes. We are still lowest in the tier in the region in our taxes. We continually do that year after year. We buy things and we save to do it, we have a five-year capital plan, we have a 20-year rotating roadwork plan. The cost of asphalt goes up and up. We've been lucky this winter, salt doubled. So what do we do? Do we say, oh, you know what, we don't have any money to buy salt? This council's not going to raise your taxes, we're not going to buy salt, we're out, that's it. You can't do that, that's not realistic. To George's point, it became very apparent that the state was going to raise their share of the gas tax. You haven't seen anything yet, wait till the feds get done with theirs, because that's how they're going to pay for their infrastructure problem, problem, project when they get it done. We're going to see gas prices go up to $4, $5 a gallon. In Europe, they've been paying $7, $8, $9 a gallon for years. So, to play this delaying game, okay, that's fine, but there will come a time, and Becky calculated over a five-year period of denying small increases in the levy would amount to what, a million and a half dollars that we would get behind?
It was almost, almost 1.1 million by 2025, and that's just for not increasing it last year. So you put two years on top of each other, you're looking at probably more like 1.7, 1.8 million.
And again, if we were spending the money on something other than the people who give us the money, but that's how we take care of business. Yes?
To echo a lot of the comments, to put in some other perspectives, and I understand your idea of not raising taxes and cutting something, well, that all sounds good, but what are you going to cut? We have a police department that does an excellent job, and except for the types that get arrested, everybody I hear seems to be very happy with the police department, seems to be safe, we don't have all the gang problem, the graffiti thing appears to have disappeared. The fire department, I never hear any complaining about the fire department, everybody has kudos to say because we have a top-notch group and because we keep it maintained and funded. The public works, I rarely hear anybody whining and crying about that, except that the roads aren't fixed because we don't have the money to fix the roads and put all the money into the infrastructure. They're stretched extremely thin with the resources for capital improvements, but you never hear anybody whining and crying about the fact that they're overstaffed and people are just playing solitaire all day on computers. It's, I don't see where you think that you're going to cut or stop spending, everything goes up, everything, and everybody has to pay a portion. Again, you don't know what the final end product is, but again, hopefully with more growth on the business and industrial side, the tax burden will be shifted a little more to them, so that the expected homeowner won't have that big of an increase. A whopping $12 increase for, between the city and the library, is not a huge increase, we're not talking hundreds of dollars, thousands of dollars.
One thing that I think we've not talked about in this discussion, and this is very informative discussion as usual, we don't borrow money. So I can get everything fixed, everything done, all I have to do is go write a bond and borrow the money and in debt the future citizens of this community a 20-year payback. We have, when we have needed to do bonding in years past, we have paid them off sooner, we paid them off or refinanced them at a lower rate. I, I guess, at some point, it's kind of an insult, because it seems like the feeling in this room from some people is that this isn't a well-run city. I will tell you, the professional people that run our departments are top-notch, they could be working someplace else for a whole lot more money, but they love Belvidere, and a lot of them are from Belvidere, and a lot of them have the best interest of all of the people in this community at their heart. So if we want to move ahead and vote for a 0% increase, is that including the library?
Yes, the whole levy.
Does anybody, yes, Alderman Stevens?
I was going to suggest we split the two, the library from the city.
Well, we'll have to vote on his motion first, because he made it first and it was seconded. So we now have a motion to amend to reduce the entire levy to a 0% increase, including the city and the library. Am I saying that right? Okay.
I have to subtract out, so you would be taking the 5,817,475 and subtracting out the 107. I've got too many papers on my desk. Subtracting out the 107, 0.3. So your levy would be 5,710,422. Let me double check that. Yep, 5,710,422 would include the city with a 0 and the library with a 2.15.
No, it's supposed to be 0.
His, his recommendation and second vote for 0 for both.
Okay, the 0 for both is exactly what the levy has been, 5,694,873.
Okay, so we have a motion to amend the entire levy, including the library, to the number she just stated, all, yes?
Just had one more thing to say. People from different places that want to move here, they see what happens to our town, what, what we do, everything we do, we go backwards. That's why I'm trying to sell a house, and it's like $27,000 left, less than what I bought it 16 years ago, when it should be a than what I bought it sixteen years ago, when it should be a hundred thousand more. And people that wanna do things and bring things into this town, they see that. They don't wanna bring anything here because of things like this. Because what we do on the city council, it just does not make sense. You got bills, the bills have to be paid, everything goes up, and you just gotta face it and vote this levy.
Okay. Alderman Frank.
It's short. I just wanna say, not everybody can afford everything going up. I have people in my ward just today that has left to go to Tennessee, just left his house, and then today I come home and there's all his lawn is full of furniture that he couldn't keep up. Not everybody in my ward can keep up. I have three sisters that live on Church Street that are living in their parents' home, and they can't afford any more increases.
You, go ahead.
You have people in your ward that moved to Tennessee. Of course they moved to Tennessee, because it's so dirt-cheap on taxes and everything like that. But that's only because of the state Illinois. The state Illinois is in a mess, so we're in a mess. But we're trying to handle it the best we can, and I think we've done pretty good in this town. But things aren't for free, you gotta pay for them.
I guess, I'm a little confused. We have jobs begging at many businesses here, that all people have to do is walk in, fill out the application, have a minimum of skills, they'll be trained. General Mills needs multiple people on their shift. There are some of the, now that the car things are starting up again, there are openings trained to hire. There are jobs available. I don't understand, if somebody can't, okay. This is not a welfare state, okay? If people can't find work, and they don't have savings, and they don't have skills that are marketable, then they can't live anywhere unless they get a handout from somebody, okay? Now, I happen to know that there are a lot of support programs available in the state of Illinois, and that's one of the problems, because we have so many of them, that our budget, state budget addresses every year. The Community Action Agency, free childcare if you qualify, food with all of the different programs, and there are multiple programs available. You just have to know, go where to look. We're not gonna buy people houses, they have to work to earn a house. I don't know where we got in this idea in this country, all of a sudden, that everybody gets to have everything all the time. You don't. You know, my parents, my grandparents, your parents, your grandparents busted their backs to give us a nice house, to give us a good education, and to do all of that. I'm proud to pay my taxes. I'm glad they take money out of my taxes, because that's how I support my community. And do my taxes go up? Yes. Do my federal taxes go up? Yes. But, you know, to deprive the li, the library is the beginning for a lot of kids to get on the right track educationally toward a positive and productive life. So, we have this motion. Does anybody else have any other comments before we vote on the motion to go back to zero on the library and the city, on the whole thing, leave it the way it was? Anybody have anything else? If not, all those in favor of this motion to go backwards. Will, when your name is called, signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay.
Porter?
Aye.
Radcliffe?
No.
Snow?
No.
Stevens?
Aye.
Bruerton?
Aye.
Crawford?
Definitely no.
Frank?
No.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Five in favor?
Motion to amend passes. So now, if somebody wants to make the amendment to split the two apart, the city attorney will have to explain to you, there'll be some math that needs to be done with that.
I'd like to make the motion to split them apart, so that we can increase the library's share.
I have a motion.
Forgive me. We can't split them apart, because they're the same section, the actual ordinance, but is your motion then to reinstate the two point one, sorry, was it two point one five percent increase to the library line item of the levy?
Yes, that's what I'd like to do.
So I have a motion by Alderman Stevens. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
By Alderman Porter.
And so Ms. Tobin, what will the library levy be then, and the total levy?
So the total levy will be, it would be five million, seven hundred and ten thousand, four twenty-two. Library portion would be five, or seven hundred and twenty-six thousand, two twenty-four.
So I have a motion and a second. All those in favor of the amendment, you wanted to say something? Marsh, go ahead.
So where does that two point one percent from the library then come out of the city's, the city's portion that is getting a zero percent, right?
No, it would not come out of that. That would, that's why it would be, your amount would increase from five million, six ninety-four, eight seventy-three, to five million, seven hundred and ten thousand, four twenty-two. So your levy would be going up fifteen thousand, two eighty-five, to cover the library's portion.
So that's still then raising property taxes.
Yes.
So again, I gotta say, you know, fifteen thousand dollars, I would think that somebody could find a creative way to privately raise some money for the library. You know, when my granddaughter lived in the county, and she came, begged and begged and begged for a library card when she was five, and my daughter-in-law took her to the library, and it was an astronomical amount, and they, she said, I can't, I can't, I can't get my five-year-old daughter a library card, because it's just out of our price range. So I had to take, because I lived in the city, my granddaughter there, my granddaughter couldn't get her own library card, and it was basically heartbreaking that a five-year-old little girl could not get a library card who begged for one. So this is only just gonna increase the amount that the county kids have to pay to, again. So now more county kids aren't gonna be able to afford it. I just, I don't, I mean, they need to find a way to raise some money.
Additional questions or comments? Alderman Snow.
No offense, but I think that's a naive approach. I, it's, they're not gonna have bake sales and raise fifteen-plus thousand dollars, and they really need to be brought up another fifteen or twenty thousand from last year. The problem compounds, because next year, in order to recoup the money that they need for these last two years, for the people that keep voting no, because they don't wanna raise taxes, now it's gonna be six percent. And you're gonna see that more so every year that pops up, and when it finally gets caught up, or the library has, when, when your granddaughter wants to go to the library, and she gets out of school at three o'clock, oh, the library closed at three. Why? Because they can't staff it. It's ludicrous to think that they're gonna be able to operate like that. And again, they don't have other avenues of funding. You know, so I believe you're looking at it very naively, and I commend you that you don't wanna raise taxes. I'm a diehard Republican, I don't wanna raise taxes, but I know things go up. I don't wanna necessarily add extra tax, so that the police department can have a new command vehicle for a fourth deputy chief and stuff like that. But everything needs to go up, and I think you're doing the library a disservice.
So Dan, when, when your grocery bill goes up, and your rent bill or mortgage bill goes up, because you now gotta put more in escrow, and your car insurance bill goes up, and everything's going up, gasoline, as you mentioned, but your wages didn't increase enough to cover all of those, what do you do? You cut something, you cut your cable bill back, you cut your cellphone back, you find a way to buy your groceries on your budget, correct?
Okay, I would appreciate if the Alderman would address the chair, instead of talking across the aisle to one another. That's the proper way to do things. And let me, let me clarify something for you. You can solve the county's problem real simple. They can develop their own library system. And guess what? They're gonna raise their property taxes to pay for it. So you're getting upset, because somebody lives in the county, and they have to pay their fair share that we all pay, that we fund our library. So it's no, it's not to penalize anybody, it's because the city puts up the money to maintain the library, to maintain the staff, and a lot of the dollars that they use, there's a percentage of that that goes toward their grant funding, to be able to pay their share of a grant funding. So again, sometimes we get wound up about the wrong thing, and if the, if the county wants to have a library system, they can start their own library system, and they can pay taxes, just like everybody else, to support that library system. I would agree, and I think you would be, if you wanna save the taxpayers money, we don't wanna fund a library system for the county, because we cannot afford to do that. Alderman Snow.
The mayor brings up an interesting point. If the, if the, if the county were to get their own library, we're taxpayers, we wouldn't be excluded from that, and we would all be paying for it. And I guess, what I was gonna ask is, in the overall scheme of things, tax dollar-wise, I'm guessing that corporate money is, contributes probably half of the, of the tax levy? You know, whether it's Chrysler and all the suppliers and everybody else, or a third?
Yeah, I'd have to go back and look, less than you think, because a lot of them qualify for certain tax breaks. You have Enterprise Zone, you have things like that, where they, they're not paying their fair, you know, their, their full percentage, I guess I should say, at that moment, but I mean, it's, it's.
But there's a significant amount of money that is paid by corporations. So, you know, it's not like we've got a whole bunch of people that are paying into the system, or entities that are paying into the system, that are never gonna make use of the library. And that helps to keep the cost off of us. If we did it just based on library cards, you'd be paying a whole lot more for a library card. Instead of a hundred and fifty dollars a year, if you were in the county, you'd be paying two or three hundred, because you'd lose all that corporate backing. So it's a deal, and I understand, a lot of people who wind up having to pay a lot of money for their county cards and that, they, they don't realize, we have to pay it. They have an option. They can get it for one year. That's only a one-time obligation. We get it for as long as we live in the city limits. We don't have the option to opt in out. We don't age out if it's a child that's gonna be using the card. So I think it's, and they may be living beyond their means if they're having to pay that much.
And it's only property owners who pay tax to the library. So we have a, we have a motion and a second, I believe, to amend to keep the library portion of the part still in the overall levy increase. Is that correct? Am I stating that correctly? Any additional questions or comments before we call the question? Yes, Alderman Porter.
Well, as far as raising taxes, I think that the fifteen thousand is a negligible, negligible amount, that, you know, I don't think that's gonna break anybody, and I think taxpayers probably be okay with that.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Yes.
The one number that nobody's really talked about tonight is the, the two million, five hundred forty-eight thousand, two sixty-eight, and that is your police-fire pension contribution for next fiscal year. So it kinda makes me nauseous every time I look at it, but that is the number that we will be paying next fiscal year.
And does anybody on the council have a better idea how we keep paying those increases every year? How do we do that? Is there a way you guys know of, that we don't know of, that you can advise us, that we might be able to pay that? Yes, Alderman Bruerton.
Well, I just think, come the budget time, we really examine, see where we can cut some spending. And if we can't, maybe we'll go through this again, and next year, and then do an increase. I'll feel better about voting for it then.
Okay, thank you for your comment. So we have a, yes, Alderman Porter.
Well, I think I brought this up last year, and I was, made a recommendation that we look at the budget, or see the sample budget for the next year, before we make this vote. And I'm just wondering why we can't do that? Why can't we do a sample budget and see where we're gonna be at?
Your only way to do that would be to move your budget cycle and run on a calendar year, or December one, like the county does. We just, we haven't even started. By the time I finish the audit process in August, there is no time. There's one of me, that we can't start the, I don't have time to physically start the budget process till October. So it started, I started all the work in October. You just don't see any of it yet, because it's all behind the scenes, but it's not. It just went to department heads, they're just getting things back to me now. We sit down during December, beginning of January, start going through it. There physically isn't any time, unless you would wanna change your budget cycle.
Okay. Yeah, we've run this city on a very lean basis for a long time, and continue to provide extremely high level of service in all of our departments, to all of our citizens. We never ask for anything that is not, I mean, it's almost ludicrous to ask for two point one five percent. That's not even covering the cost of living. And I don't know if you all are aware about what the tax gap and home rule thing means. We're home rule, we don't have to stay with the state formula for tax caps. We could ask for way, way more on taxes. We have stayed with what the county asks under their tax caps for our increases, so it is the very minimum amount possible to ask. And I don't think you can ask any government to do less than that, because our costs continue to go up. It's very simple. If stuff costs a hundred bucks, and we've only got eighty-eight bucks, yeah, something's, where do you wanna cut? And if you go through the budget, and you say, okay, let's cut four hundred dollars here, and let's cut the fuel cost here, and let's, that's not an approach. We have, we do an audit every year, a very thorough audit, and anybody that's been on this council, every year they've been on this council, audits have come back clean. And our audits have come back with letters of understanding that we do an extremely good job managing the money of this city. So, okay, are we ready to vote yet? Alderman Snow.
To Mr. Porter's comments, the, we already work with the premise, generally speaking, that we're gonna work off of last year's budget. Things are gonna go up, the salt, maintenance on vehicles, supplies, and things like that. So rarely, generically speaking, is the budget ever gonna go backwards. It's always gonna wind up going up, because the cost of everything goes up. And in that regard, Ms. Tobin has already broached the fact that we have all the pension liabilities, which is not even covered by any dollar amounts for the increase by the tax levy. We have numerous infrastructure materials, I believe a pumper truck, and some other things that were handed out a couple weeks ago. So that's already kind of a snapshot. We've already got last year's budget, it's gonna be X number of dollars, and you've gotta have increases on top of that. So it's not gonna go backwards. I can't imagine the thing going backwards. When we, when the recession hit, and I was here during that, it was tough. A lot of people retired, there were numerous positions, Brent's doing three people's work, the finance person's doing a lot of other people's work. There's just a tremendous amount of leanness to this operation, and I don't know where you're gonna cut funds. And God bless you if you think you can, but I'd love to see where that's gonna occur.
So if we get voted an increase, and something happens in the year, and our revenue stream increases unexpectedly, we get more from sales tax, or there's a hotel that opens, or something like that, those monies don't fly away, and they go into the general fund, and they're available for next year. I don't know where you think the money goes, if we spend it, if we, taxpayers pay it. It goes into the general fund, spend on the taxpayers, and is put into the budget. And most years, we run pretty close. We'll run, you know, a few thousand dollars behind, or a few thousand dollars ahead, but it's been pretty close. So we have a motion and a second to amend the budget to include the fifteen thousand dollar increase for the library. All those in favor of this amendment to the budget, will, when your name is called, signify I don't know where you think the money goes if we spend it, if we, taxpayers pay it. It goes into the general fund, spend on the taxpayers, and is put into the budget. And most years, we run pretty close. We'll run, you know, a few thousand dollars behind, or a few thousand dollars ahead. But it's been pretty close. So, we have a motion and a second to amend the budget to include the $15,000 increase for the library. All those in favor of this amendment to the budget? Will, when your name is called, signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay.
Ratcliffe.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Burton.
No.
Crawford.
Aye.
Frank.
Aye.
Freeman.
No.
McGee.
No.
Porter.
Aye.
Six in favor?
The motion is passed as amended. Okay, here we go. We will now vote... Do I need a motion or a second to do that? We already have it. We will vote on the amendment as amended. And motion as amended. All those in favor of voting will. When your name is called, signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay. Yes, Alderman Burton.
I just wanna make a quick comment before I vote. I'm gonna vote aye on this, because we need a levy.
Okay. Anybody else have a comment before we vote? Roll call vote, please.
Snow.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Burton.
Aye.
Crawford.
Aye.
Frank.
Aye.
Freeman.
Nay.
McGee.
Nay.
Porter.
Aye.
Ratcliffe.
Aye.
Seven in favor?
Thank you, ladies, for coming and sticking up for your jobs, for the library, and for the community. Okay. Item B. Ordinance 476H, second reading, ordinance making a levy and providing for special service area number two tax in the city of Belvidere, Boone County, Illinois, for the fiscal year beginning May 1, 2019, and ending April 30, 2020. May have a motion to approve. Motion by Alderman Snow, second. By Alderman Ratcliffe. Questions or comments concerning the motion now on the floor? Hearing not all, those in favor of approval, will, when your name is called, signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay.
Stevens.
Aye.
Burton.
Aye.
Crawford.
No.
Frank.
Aye.
Freeman.
Aye.
McGee.
Aye.
Porter.
Aye.
Ratcliffe.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Eight in favor?
Okay. Ordinance 476H is passed, which brings us to ordinance 477H, second reading, ordinance making a levy and providing for special area number three tax in the city of Belvidere, Boone County, Illinois, for the fiscal year beginning May 1, 2019, and ending April 30, 2020. Motion to approve. Motion by Alderman Snow, second, please. Thank you, Alderman McGee. Questions, comments, or further discussion concerning the motion now on the floor? Hearing not all, those in favor of approval, will, when your name is called, signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay.
Burton.
Aye.
Crawford.
No.
Frank.
Aye.
Freeman.
Aye.
McGee.
Aye.
Porter.
Aye.
Ratcliffe.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Eight in favor?
Motion is passed. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Item D, motion to approve city attorney to draft an ordinance for gas use tax, and an agreement with the NICO to collect tax was tabled October 7. If it remain on the table, we have heard back from one of our major industrial users. We're waiting for two more to see how we can work a compromise with them on the cost of the gas they buy outside of town. Which brings us to item E. And this is a motion to direct city attorney to draft an ordinance imposing a 3% tax on the sale of cannabis products, and direct the city attorney and city planner to process a text amendment restricting cannabis dispensaries sales to the general business and planned business districts as a special use in licensed growers of cannabis to an appropriate industrial zoning district. These ordinances will come into full city council early 2020. This was tabled December 2. Need a motion and a second to remove it from the table.
So moved.
Motion by Alderman Burton, second. By Alderman Freeman. Questions, comments, or further discussion? Yes?
So, I would like to amend this to read that it's not restricted to the central business district, and that no special use permit is needed.
On the first part, it's restricted from the central business? Because right now, it's not allowed there? To allow it there?
Right.
As well as the other districts?
As well as the other districts. I mean, we're looking for money. And if an entrepreneur wants to come in here and open that with a 3% tax, that's money in our pockets. Why would we restrict them from not being downtown, where we have... I mean, you can walk into a Spanish grocery store and buy liquor. You can go into a bar. You can get a tattoo. You know, why would you not be... It's not for consumption on-site. So, it's basically in line with a liquor store. So, why would we want to restrict any investor that would want to come here and open one?
I'll second that.
Okay, the motion is second. Additional questions or comments? Alderman Snow.
And I guess I would disagree in that regards, that I think there's enough issues and problems that could arise from this kind of transaction. And the police department has already voiced their concern. And as far as no special use, again, I think you need to allow the residents and the people in the immediate area to weigh in on something like this.
Just to remind the council, I think you already know this, but people at home may not know that, and people in the audience may not understand this. We're not actually voting on the ordinances this evening. This is just direction myself and the planner Gina Del Rose to draft an ordinance to come back to city council. First, we'll have to go to the Planning and Zoning Commission, have a public hearing there, receive their recommendation at the city council, and then that ordinance will come back to city council. So, this is not substantive vote. This is just directed, is what you want us to draft.
Alderman Porter.
I guess I would like to ask, are we still gonna have a chance at some point, then, to vote down dispensaries altogether? Because I guess we do have that option. And we never did take an official vote as to whether to allow them at all at this point. So, I'm wondering if we still can vote them down at some point in the future?
Well, as I previously explained, the default status in the state of Illinois is that they are allowed. Municipalities may prohibit dispensaries within the corporate boundaries of the municipality. However, that requires a motion and a second adoption of an ordinance. No member of the city council ever made a motion to prohibit dispensaries. We did discuss the possibility that you could do that, but nobody made that motion.
Okay, if I may. I had a phone call week before last, end of the week. There are a couple of gentlemen that are looking at Winnebago and Boone County for dispensary sites. And what has seemingly been happening with the licensing from the state government is once there is a medical outlet, they will then turn around and give them the regular licensing to sell to the public, simply because they have the supply chain put together. There is no marijuana being grown right now that is available to be sold in our area. We're buying marijuana from a backlog that the Canadian government has. It's 400,000 tons of marijuana, because they're allowing marijuana. Didn't seem to work out good for them. So, we're buying marijuana from the Canadians to put through our medical dispensaries. There is already a medical dispensary in the works on Perryville Road in Rockford. We won't get one for at least a year, and it may be longer. I think we're arguing about something, and we don't even know if we're even gonna get an opportunity to have one at this point in time.
And as I indicated previously to the council, under the Cannabis Regulation and Tax Act, Belvidere and Boone County did not receive one of the authorized licenses in the first year of the cannabis sales, beginning January 1 of 20. However, those are new licenses. A medical establishment that already exists can be an early adopter for retail sales. There's some speculation they could relocate a second office outside of their normal locations. There are some state-owned communities that are represented by some very excellent attorneys that have actually been approached, because they want to locate close to the Wisconsin border to be able to engage in sales across state lines. Actually, strike that. Sales would be in Illinois. People may transport across state lines. So, that's probably the only chance Belvidere and Boone County had to be able to get one in 2020. But they keep changing the act. The amendment was 400 pages long.
Yeah.
So, you know, it's hard to tell. That's why I think it's incumbent, if you're going to allow the dispensaries, you get your text amendments and your tax in place as quickly as possible.
Alderman Crawford.
Yeah, I kinda wanna know the same thing Alderman Porter wanted to know, 'cause you did it by a raise of hands, and I hate to waste your time, because I want a chance to reconsider my vote and go to no.
Okay. The whole idea of the special use is simply to put more controls in place so that the people around a dispensary are aware that there is a dispensary close to where they live, or close to where they do their business. Contrary to the belief of a lot on this council, not everybody smokes marijuana and wants to smoke marijuana. A lot of people don't want it close to them. We, the jury's out. I mean, you know, I have nothing... We already decriminalized the session in this town five years ago, where somebody's caught with a joint, they don't go to jail, they get a ticket. They go home, you know? You know, this idea of using sin taxes on stuff that's not good for people to raise money, to fund city government, first of all, shame on us. It's like cigarettes are $10 a pack. You know, what you pay for liquor is, you know, about a third of the price. I don't think that we need to go down that road any further. I mean, that's just my opinion. I have nothing against people smoking marijuana, certainly not. I've been a supporter of medical marijuana for years. I just don't know that we want it to be able, anybody to pop up. I don't want it, you know, if we rezone the old hospital and professional building up by my house, I don't want a dispenser across the street from my house. You had a lot of little kids running around in that community, you know? I think people have a right to decide, and I think there have to be some controls that make sense. That's all. I mean, city attorney?
Oh, finish your thought. But to Alderman now raise a question whether we want to allow dispensaries at all in the city of Belvidere. As I previously stated, that requires an ordinance by the city prohibiting cannabis dispensaries within the city. By our own rules, that kind of ordinance has to originate at committee, though.
Right, this is council.
Or a council. I would rather not be in a position where I'm drafting two contradictory ordinances. But if you want that kind of a discussion, give the clerk's office a call, have them put it on the agenda, and make the motion to prohibit cannabis dispensaries in the city of Belvidere. That would negate the work that we're discussing today. So, if you're gonna do that, please do it quicker than later, before Gina and I spend a lot of time starting this process. Gina's already getting the public hearing documents and notices out for planning and zoning. So, you know, if you're gonna go that route, let us know, send it on the agenda for Monday night.
So, we have an amendment, or we have a motion and a second to amend to allow it to be everywhere? Is that what your amendment is?
No.
I never said everywhere.
Okay, it sounded like that.
Obviously, not residential.
Okay.
But I don't think the central...
Every place but residential?
I don't think the central business district, meaning downtown, where we have bars and liquor and tattoo parlors, should be excluded.
Should there be a distance from a church, or a library, or a school?
Is that what it is for bars and liquor stores?
Yeah, there's a setback rule.
Then, yeah.
Are those okay? We keep those?
Would be the same as if it were a liquor store, not a bar, where you have on-site consumption, a liquor store.
We can draft that in any appropriate ordinance that comes back before you and the Planning and Zoning Commission.
So, I have a motion and a second. Yes?
Yeah, I just wanna know, is that like, this is basically like a waste of time to take a vote? If it's gonna go back to the committee? Like you said, it should go back to the committee?
The motion to prohibit would have to originate in committee, that's correct.
So, what do we do about this vote?
If you vote it up by next Monday, we'll know which way the council's gonna go on it. And we'll see. Remember, this is not an ordinance passing anything. This is just directing me to start drafting something along with Gina.
So, right now...
Just didn't wanna waste your time.
I'm not gonna do any work until next Monday night, after what I heard today.
So, we have a motion and a second to allow dispensary sales...
If you want, I can clarify. It's a motion...
Central business, general business. Go ahead.
And planned business. It's a motion to direct the city attorney to draft the tax ordinance with 3% tax on the sale of cannabis, and the planner and the city attorney to draft a text amendment restricting cannabis dispensary sales to the general business, planned districts, planned business, and central business districts, period.
Does that sort of say it? Does that get it all? Alderman Burton? Alderman Freeman?
Yeah, that was my amendment. But I also wanted the special use struck.
That, I noticed I didn't mention the special use.
Okay, all those in favor of the motion now on the floor? Will, when your name is called, signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay.
Crawford.
No.
Frank.
Aye.
Freeman.
Aye.
McGee.
Aye.
Porter.
No.
Ratcliffe.
No.
Snow.
No.
Stevens.
Aye.
Burton.
Aye.
Five in favor?
Amendment passes. Amendment passes. And so, the city attorney now has his instructions.
We should probably vote on the amended motion, even though we know the answer.
So, okay, this is getting tiresome. We will now vote on the amended motion. All those in favor of the amended motion, will, when your name is called, signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay.
Frank.
You're voting on the... We made an amendment.
Right.
We voted that up. Now, we're voting on the amended motion to include the things we just voted up.
Aye.
Freeman.
Aye.
McGee.
Aye.
Porter.
No.
Ratcliffe.
No.
Snow.
No.
Stevens.
Aye.
Burton.
Aye.
Crawford. Five in favor?
Okay, the motion passes. Okay, let's move on to some new business. Under number 10, ordinance, under number A, ordinance 478H, first reading, ordinance granting a special use to allow indoor commercial entertainment bar with video gaming within the general business district at 1500 North State Street. I'll entertain a motion to approve. Oh, motion out of committee? No, excuse me. Give me a minute, I'm gonna go get a drink of coffee. Jesus. Okay. I'm reading these into the record, 'cause they are silent readings, pardon me. So, under B, we have so 479H, first reading, ordinance approving a replat titled GCZ Corner Subdivision. And item C, ordinance 480H, minus first reading, an ordinance granting a special use to amend the plan development within the planned industrial district at 1050 ECS Way. Excuse me. Next up, we have motions for it in committee to hall, building, planning, and zoning in public works of December 9, 2019. Motion will be presented by Chairman Porter. Chairman Porter. A motion to approve the government authority in Belvidere and Bank Authority of the city of Belvidere. Motion out of committee. Questions, comments, or further discussion concerning the motion now on the floor? Hearing not all, those in favor, approval will, when your name is called, signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay.
Freeman.
Aye.
McGee.
Aye.
Porter.
Aye.
Ratcliffe.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Burton?
Aye.
Crawford?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Nine in favor?
Motion is approved unanimously. Thank you, Chairman Porter. Next, under motions of finance and personnel, Chairman Ratcliffe will present the motion.
Thank you, Mayor. A, motion to waive section two dash eight eight of the city of Belvidere municipal code as it relates to an appointment to fill the vacancy for Ward Two Alderman.
Motion out of committee. Questions, comments? Alderman Snow?
I wonder if we could have an explanation exactly what we're waiving, what's section two twenty eight in a nutshell?
As you recall, last week, we had, at committee, we had several of the applicants or people who are interested in filling the vacancy and will or children come and discuss at the city council, however, the, sorry, committee of the hall, but the mayor did not make his appointment known at that point. You have a peculiar rule in your own city code, we actually just referred to it a moment ago in this discussion regarding Alderman Porter's questions on cannabis, that requires, unless waived by the full city council, everything to go to committee first. His appointment technically was not at committee. So the question now is, will you waive that rule so you can actually reach the decision as to whether you want to approve or not approve his appointment to the Ward Two position? If this vote fails, it does not mean that that vote will not be had, it's just what he had in two weeks, or actually at the next city council meeting in January, as opposed to tonight. So all it would do is delay the vote, it would not eliminate the vote.
So there's no plus to this?
To-
To waiving it, there's no-
You cannot, well, except for it leaves that seat vacant another three or four weeks. If you don't-
So it means that there's no rush?
You make a decision tonight as opposed in three weeks on the appointment. Right.
Additional questions or comments? Motion on the floor, all those in favor of waiving section two eighty eight of the city of Belvidere municipal code as it relates to the appointment to fill the vacancy for Ward Two Alderman, will, when your name is called, signify by saying aye, those opposed nay.
McGee?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Ratcliffe?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Burton?
No.
Crawford?
No.
Frank?
No.
Six, oh, Freeman?
Aye.
Six in favor?
Motion is waived, which will then take us to item B. Alderman Ratcliffe?
I thought you were looking at me.
It's been a long night.
The appointment of Natalie Mulhall to Ward Two Alderman.
And in your packets was the mayor's appointment of Ms. Natalie Mulhall to the Ward Two Alderman seats. The Illinois municipal code, this is not local code, this is the Illinois municipal code, provides that the mayor is vested with the duty to appoint a position to fill a vacancy in the city council, or if you're village board of trustees. The appointment hours initially subject to the advice and consent of the city council, so what is being sought today is this council's consent.
So motion out of committee? Additional questions or comments?
No, it's not a committee because we waived, you need a motion to approve the consent of Ms. Natalie Mulhall.
At what he said. Alderman Snow?
And, well, I appreciate Natalie. I do, I will vote yes on this, but I do strongly favor Daniel Arivelo in the fact that he's participated, and he's a prior alderman, he's ran several times, lost by narrow margins, and he would have been my first choice based on that, but I have nothing opposed to Natalie.
Is that a motion?
That a motion?
Yes.
I have a second. Motion by Alderman Ratcliffe. Questions, comments, or further discussion concerning the motion now on the floor? Hearing not all, those in favor of the appointment of Natalie Mulhall to Ward Two Alderman, will, when your name is called, signify by saying aye, those opposed nay.
Porter?
No.
Ratcliffe?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
No.
Burton?
No.
Crawford?
No.
Frank?
No.
Freeman?
No.
McGee?
No.
Two in favor?
Ms. Mulhall is not appointed. Thank you for your time and your interest in the city. I thought your presentation and the skill set that you would bring to the council would improve overall the skill sets on the council, so thank you for your time.
Mr. Mayor, in light of the vote, a couple things. Number one, item C, the swearing is not necessary this evening.
Okay.
Which procedure brings us to the point that again, under the Illinois municipal code, it is the mayor's duty to bring back a second alternative candidate to the city council, at which point the city council would vote on the confirmation of that candidate, or I should say, appointment.
Okay.
Okay, moving ahead. D, motion to approve the appointment of Lori Nann, the Public Library Board of Trustees.
Motion out of committee. Questions, comments, or further discussion concerning the motion now on the floor? Hearing not all, those in favor of the appointment will, when your name is called, signify by saying aye, those opposed nay.
Ratcliffe?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Burton?
Aye.
Crawford?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Nine in favor?
Motion is approved unanimously. Under motion E, Ms. Tobin, did you have a corrected amount on our share?
There is a corrected, a corrected version that you see tonight. Lieutenant Malloy went back and he had included the cost of the phones in the price to the city, so he has removed those, so the new number is twenty-three thousand, three thirty and thirty cents, and our monthly SIP cost is going to be about three hundred and sixty-five dollars, and right now we're paying about six eighty, so it's definitely an annual cost savings for us.
Okay.
Okay, so, motion to approve the new telephone system telecom with the county at a purchase price not to exceed would be twenty-three thousand, three thirty?
And thirty cents.
Thirty cents.
I just said- Okay. Motion out of committee. Questions, comments, or further discussion concerning the motion now on the floor? Hearing not all, those in favor, approval to approve a new telephone system with telecom with the county at a purchase price not to exceed twenty-three thousand, three hundred and thirty dollars and thirty cents, will, when your name is called, signify by saying aye, those opposed nay.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Burton?
Aye.
Crawford?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.